Good afternoon. I call to order the Lake Havasu City Council Work Session on Tuesday, July 27, 2021 at 5:00 p.m. Members of the public can attend in person or watch the meeting live on Channel 4 or going to LHCaz.gov/tv. If you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Ms. Williams, if you'd please call the roll.
Councilmembers Nancy Campbell.
Here.
Jim Dolan.
I am digitally available.
Michelle Lynn.
Here.
Cameron Moses.
Here.
David Lane.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jenny Koch.
Here.
Mayor Kalshihi.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to Item 4 and 4.1, which is Discussion Regarding the Lake Havasu City Code 9.16.140, Water Flow Upon Streets and Possible Alternatives or Modifications to City Code. Mr. Frosley, good evening. Good afternoon and welcome.
Good afternoon. Thank you. Welcome to our council. As you just indicated, I have a presentation tonight to discuss swimming pool drainage. I have about eight slides. The first slide is actually on your screen already, so we have that going for us.
Yeah, it's your mic. Same. Now it's better. Yeah.
It's just like when you take your car to the mechanic. Okay, I've got a presentation tonight. It contains eight slides. The first couple of slides are going to be a quick review of our existing codes and ordinance regarding stormwater and pool draining. I thought it would be a good idea that we all had the same information by the time we got to the discussion portion of the presentation. The first couple of slides, because they're related to the city code, they have a lot of words on them because it's just excerpts from the code. I'm not going to read them to you. I don't expect you to read them, but I will be summarizing them for you and just basically telling you what they mean. Then after that, I'm going to have a few slides with discussion points on them. These discussion points are related to what I heard at a previous council meeting and what I read in a recent newspaper article. And I've got some bullet points for those items that we can discuss as well. And then finally, the last slide, which I found very interesting, is a table. It's got 12 cities that we polled or looked at down in the valley. And the table will indicate to you folks what is allowed in those cities and what is not allowed in those cities. And I have some thoughts on that to start the conversation. So if you're ready, we can go ahead and get started.
Yes, please.
There are really only two city code sections or chapters that deal with stormwater and with pool draining. There are chapters 8.28 Stormwater, subsection 8.28.090 is a list. It's permitted non-stormwater discharges. And Chapter 9.16 is offenses relating to property. And specifically, 9.16.140 is water flow upon streets. We'll start with Chapter 8.28. 8.28 is really in our code as a result of some scary sounding things. They're not really that scary. I'm talking about the Federal Clean Water Act of 1972 and the Arizona Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, which is just a permit from the state. We refer it as the AZIPTI's permit. Maybe you've heard of that before. That's what we operate, our municipal storm sewer, under that permit. So basically, it's a very complicated program to regulate stormwater and stormwater discharge to protect Lake Havasu. Under this program, the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality has decided that we are what we call a municipal separate storm sewer system, MS4 for short. As an MS4, we were required to develop a very comprehensive stormwater plan, submit that to DEQ to get their approval, and then provide periodic updates to them as well. Everything has to go through the state for that. And the reason I'm bringing that up is this code section supports that stormwater master plan that is approved by the state already. In general, Chapter 2.8 says that it is illegal to discharge anything into the storm sewer or our MS4 that is not stormwater, specifically anything that is bad. And there's a long list of bad things that are provided there. But the code also provides a list of acceptable discharges, which I have for you here. This is directly out of our code. You can see number 14 is the topic of conversation this evening. And according to our city code, that supports our stormwaters plan approved by the state, pool discharge is considered not significant contributor of pollutants to the MS4. So we're allowed to do that. I just wanted to clarify that. That's how we wrote the code to make sure we weren't breaking any federal laws by discharging these pools. The other chapter of the code was 9.16 Offenses Relating to Property. And Section 9.16.140 is Water Flow Upon Streets. And it's very specific to pool draining. You can see after Section A there, it basically mimics 8.28 and says it's illegal to cause flooding, impede vehicular traffic, and create hazard. It also says you can't cause damage to public streets, right in the code. And then if you read B, it says except for swimming pools. They can be drained. However, this is the regulations included in our code for what are acceptable methods for draining pools in Lake Havasu City, what's acceptable to the city. And there's four options. And they're listed in the code in order of priority. So the best option in the eyes of the city right now, according to this code, is to drain all of your pool water on your own personal property. This option can be done any time of the day. There's no time restrictions or anything like that. But I think most of us would find that quite challenging to find an area on our own property to discharge that kind of water. The code says if you can't do number one, you should go take a look at number two, which is to drain your pool to an adjacent wash. It's got a bunch of language in there about erosion and all that stuff. And you can also drain your pool to a wash any time of day with no time restrictions. Not everybody lives by a wash, so it says go to Option 3, which is drain to the sewer, the sanitary sewer. This is a good option. However, not everybody is on the sanitary sewer system. And we have a handful of areas in town that have neighborhood pump stations that don't have the capacity to accept, you know, 10,000 or 15,000 gallons of water all at one time. Basically, it's like cul-de-sac areas that fall away from the main line or from the main street, 15 houses, 20 houses maybe. Those systems, we have a list at the wastewater plant. If somebody does call, we check their address on our list and tell them yes or no to do that. If they don't call and they drain their pool to that lift station, it will be overwhelmed and overflow, and our SCADA system will alert the staff to go out there because there's a problem. That's why we put it in the code. They have to call. The last option, which is the least desirable based on the city code, is to drain to the street, which is what we're talking about this evening. This can only be done between the hours of 8:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. And this is on purpose to minimize the nuisance or the impact to the traveling public. It also has a provision in there for emergency repairs. In case there's emergency, you don't want to let your pool, you know, leak behind the walls all night. You can drain it during the daytime. Number five on the list isn't an option to drain the pool, but it is a statement that says if you're not following the code when you're draining your pool, that this city will initiate the code enforcement process. So what is our code enforcement process, right? Our code enforcement officer, of which we have one, Denise, she told me that she takes phone calls and she stops when she sees a pool draining when she's out on her daily inspections. And that amounts to about two to three stops or contacts per week. Typically, she told me that those are not pool companies. Those are homeowners that were just unaware of the regulation of the time. So there's no enforcement necessarily. It's more a warning, here's the code, here's what you can do, please don't do it again. I can say the same thing about the police department. I was told that they take approximately, well, they took 15 calls in 2020, and they've only had five so far through the first seven months of this year. Same thing. They go to the home, and if they are violating the code, it's an educational opportunity. And there's no violation, maybe a verbal warning, but they say, please don't do that again, and they move on. Our wastewater division, if you remember, Option 3 required them to call the wastewater division if they're going to drain to the sewer system. In year 2020, they took 28 phone calls. And so far to date, in the first seven months, we've had nine at the treatment plant. So those are the people we know of that are draining down the sewer. So if you look at the year 2020, we've had, across three departments, we've had 173 interactions with the public regarding violating the pool draining code. But only 145 of those, of course, were actual violations because the wastewater ones weren't a violation of the code. So it's not a huge impact. I think it's an opportunity, or at least demonstrates that maybe we need to do a little more education, a little more public outreach at the very least. We do have a pamphlet that I found on our website, but it's very outdated. And it should have some more current or better information on it. Some of the discussion items that I gleaned from the newspaper and from a previous council meeting were a concern for chemicals on the streets and washes. Obviously, that's a concern for us as well. We're aware that petroleum-based products can and will damage asphalt. And those are products like gasoline, kerosene, diesel fuel. If there's a spill on our asphalt street, there's a very immediate attack on that to minimize the impact because we know it can really damage our pavements. But those are actually prohibited right now by Section 8.28.080. And the same thing with acid wash pools. If you're having your pool acid washed, that water is not eligible to be drained to the street. Some other method, pumped to a truck or something like that, is going to have to happen. That's specifically prohibited by the same code section that's currently in effect. We had a concern for asphalt damage from the pool water. I don't know that that's actually happening. Pool water is neutral, which means you have a pH of seven. So chemically, I don't see that our pavements are getting damaged, possibly or structurally by the chemicals. No damage, but possibly aesthetics. Typically, when a pool is being drained, it's because the water has become so hard that the chemicals aren't effective to balance that pH. And that'll have a lot of suspended solids that drop out when the water's flowing down the street. So it could leave a white residue. It's aesthetics. It's not eating away at the asphalt, and it's not structurally damaging it in the least. And one thing we have to remember is that our streets are part of our storm sewer system. They are identified as our MS4. So they're doing the job with regard to carrying water to the next downstream wash. And then the other thing that I saw in the paper was the comment about the recycle through reverse osmosis. Admittedly, I don't know much about that for large quantities like a pool. I know there's one, I think, one local company available. And I will tell you that of the 12 cities that were polled, there was only one that mentioned an alternative method. He said, basically, we were encouraged to do an internet search for recycled pool water. That's what was on their pamphlet. There wasn't anything by name in not even reverse osmosis, not that we could find in the short time we had to pull this together. So my last slide is this. You can see, those are the 12 cities that we took a look at. All but four, well, three really, four, Mesa has a last resort, similar to how our code reads, but all but, say, four strictly prohibit discharge to the street. I honestly think that has nothing to do with asphalt degradation and more to do with environmental reasons. Some of these cities down in the valley actually have real storm sewer systems, not pavement. So it goes into a pipe and it discharges to a wetland or a lake or a river that has, you know, animal life and other things. So chemicals could damage. So in those situations, it's an all or nothing thing. It's different from us where we could discharge a pool and it could go a few blocks down, dump into a wash, and then either be evaporated or soaked into the wash bottom. It typically, in my mind, wouldn't ever reach the lake. So that's the information I brought to the table today. Happy to try to answer any questions and hopefully we'll have a nice discussion about this.
Yeah, excellent. Thank you, Mr. Frosley. So I'll bring it back to council, and we can start the discussion from here. I know Councilmember Campbell, you were interested in having this agenda item, so maybe I'll turn it over to you first for comments or questions.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you guys for coming, the staff to come together and give me this information. That's what I really wanted to see happen. I'd like to see a lot more of these happen because this is how we all learn together. And the pool issue would not have been relative to me five years ago, or even 2018, when we started to discuss this, until we have communities like the Riviera, who is all concrete streets, and they're very, very close to our waterways. And the size pools that are being built there are bigger than most people's homes. So this is a time that I wanted to have these discussions with us as we move forward and be proactive instead of reactive. And the reason why I say that is the RO systems are a big thing that are coming back into bigger communities. Along with, I was even sent over today, I don't know if you guys got it as well, a little device that you can put on your pool. It says, never drain your pool again, includes, you know, why stop, stop the waste, save our water, save our environment. Again, we know we're in a drought. I don't expect to have all the answers here today. I expected to get all this information that you put in front of me. And what the information that I have received, it's been a driving force in many, many communities, especially now that we're in a drought. And you're dealing with, up at the foothills, you have a lot of people that have the pavers in their roads, and we've had complaints of repairs when the water comes down the street. I saw that it said, dechlorinate your water. And I've owned pills pretty much every home I've ever built. When they drained my pools, never once did they dechlorinate my water before they did it. And they ran it down the street. I didn't know any better, you know? Again, being in the asphalt street business, we know one very important thing. Water is our enemy. I don't care if it's drain water. I don't care if it's storm water. I don't care what water it is. If you have a leak in your sprinkler head, we already know the number of concrete sidewalks that just get destroyed from constant chronic water damage. So thanks for coming together today. I hope we have a great discussion. I hope we come up with maybe one or two extra solutions that we can add to this list that you guys have in front of us to bring awareness. I love that. Awareness is great. Yeah, a lot of people just, it's going to get worse. The newspaper was absolutely accurate. The number of pools being built in this community are at an all-time record high. Thank you for all coming together today and listening and bringing all this information together.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions or comments from any other members of the council? Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
Thank you, just for the sake of discussion, since we have some time. Greg, how many miles or how much, how many roads have we had to repair because of pools being leaked out or being drained out onto the streets?
Zero.
Okay, how many pumps or how often do we have to repair stormwater, or not stormwater, but your sewer water pumps and all that for pool water that's been put down into the system?
Well, when done properly and not drained to one of those smaller lift stations, it really has zero impact on the treatment process or anything else. We treat a total of 4 million-plus gallons of water every day, and the average pool is about 15,000 gallons.
But if it does happen, as you well know, it happened on my street here within the last couple of months, where I live at the end of one of those small streets where there's a pump, and the entire pump overflowed and the SCADA system went off, and everybody had to come out on overtime to fix the problem on the weekend. So it is somewhat of a problem when they put it down the sewer system when some places shouldn't be done that way. As far as saving the water, do we need additional effluent water? Or are we doing fine with the effluent we have? And what do we do with the water once it goes in and gets treated? Is it anything that we can use? I mean, yeah, we're in a drought, but if we can't use that water anyway, what difference does it make?
Currently, we're using about 50% of our treated effluent on the golf courses in London Bridge Beach Park. So we're trying to find other areas that we can connect to our reuse system to use it for irrigation rather than recharge it into the ground or inject it into the ground.
So as far as the city goes, we don't need the water for our effluent system?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
My comment to that is I know that there's a lot of well systems and your injector wells that you're pumping out by the airport are going into the well systems. We own one of the wells that actually mines all the material in this community, which makes us one of the lowest-using mines in the state of Arizona on water use because of the effluent water that you are injecting into the ground there. And we know at that point, that's a perfect solution for this water because what we're using it is for mines, and we don't want to use populous waters. So I know that a lot of effluent water can be injected into the soil and actually, through this cleaning system, is not damaging to water wells. Is that true?
Are you suggesting, I'm not following the question. Are you saying treating your pool water and rather than putting it back into the pool, injecting it?
These are two different conversations, obviously. I'm saying about having the water is what I understand about sewer systems. Adding extra chemical water is actually diluting your water down versus not, you know, solid waste. So that's one conversation. But another is the effluent water that he, that Mr. Lane, Councilmember Lane, just discussed, that we do have extra water, but it is getting pumped into groundwater, correct?
No. A small portion of it is, everything that's treated at the North Regional Wastewater Treatment Plant is injected into the ground above the 450 line, where we can one day pull that back out and use it again for irrigation. Most of our treated effluent from our three treatment plants is used to irrigate golf courses in the area and London Bridge Beach Park. Any water that's put into the sewer system just becomes part of the waste stream. It's not even a blip on our SCADA as it comes through, and it becomes part of our reuse system, either injected at the North Plant, percolated at the Island Plant, or pumped to the golf courses for irrigation.
Okay. So, and this is probably new councilwoman comment, education. I have been told that you guys are dumping water into the ground over on the north side. What is that and why are we releasing water? This is conversations I get. I haven't researched it enough, so I'm asking you. You're right in front of me. That's the joy of this.
Sure. It's not potable water. It's the treated effluent. One of the requirements of our permit with the state for that treatment plant is we cannot have ponds, open ponds, at that airport due to the close proximity to the airport. Ponds attract birds, and birds are bad for airplanes. So rather than build a huge, very expensive tank that we could use to store the effluent and then pump it back into our system, at the time, our water conservation person, Dr. Wilson, tried a pilot program that seems to be working. So we're using injection wells to get rid of the effluent. We have, I mean, it's millions of gallons of water every day. So we pump it into the ground, hoping to create a mound of treated effluent that we can pull back out of the water. But all that's very expensive. It requires pumps and pipes and tanks and everything else. So that's what we're doing at the North Plant.
But would it not be logical to say that by doing that, it is, well, systems are receiving some of that groundwater?
No.
No.
No, that's not potable water. We're staying above the aquifer.
Right.
That's not what you're drawing from either. You must have a well.
We do.
Far deeper than our Vado Zone wells is what they're called. They're a very shallow well.
Right.
And I would imagine your well goes 400 to 500 feet deep. I don't know.
I'll have to check on that because.
I think we're going to look confused. Groundwater is a whole different conversation than.
Oh, I totally understand.
So let's stick on to the pools.
Yeah, that's what, let's go back to that. So basically, we were talking about over-diluting. The reason why this conversation went that direction is we were talking about over-diluting our sewer systems. And then you'd have more effluent water that we don't need and we can't use. So let's forget about that. What I'm saying is there are systems like the RO system that you talked about, which is one option that is new in the community. This particular option is a 1995 device you put on your pools, and you never drain your pool. So again, the big debate if water doesn't damage streets, I know it does. I absolutely know water destroys streets. But if, what I guess I'm at today is can we get the information out to the public about the importance of your pool water? Do we really need, here's a good question, do we really need to be draining our pools every year? That's another question that I've asked my pool people on a regular basis. And number three, you know, is there other devices that we can learn from or educate from? I mean, this device has been out since 1995. And I do find it interesting that you have quite a few cities that are concerned, as I am, about the process of draining into streets.
Yeah, I think what I'm hearing is more of a water conservation effort. As a city, I don't know that I would be comfortable promoting one method over another. But through water conservation, which is a presentation we're actually doing at First Meeting in August, we could incorporate some of this discussion into that maybe. But I mean, I'm not a pool guy. I don't know what's available. We're not discouraging any of those things. We're just not encouraging them.
I agree. And I appreciated the point about just educating people more. Yes, it does. I am aligning with the water conservation part of it. If we talked about this five years ago, I wouldn't care. And again, I'm talking about the newly poured concrete streets that we're going to be maintaining, the Riviera, with resort-sized pools and what's going to happen with them, just having this discussion.
For clarification, we're not going to maintain those.
Oh, you're not?
No.
I thought you were.
Yeah, those are HOA, and those will be responsible for that community to maintain their own roadways.
Okay. But it is pretty darn close to the lake as well, as we're draining water into. So thank you for listening, and thank you for all showing up. And it is what it is.
Yeah, so when it comes back to the code, Ms. Frosley, is the code as written, we have that in our council communication, and then as you review it, is that working for staff?
I believe it is. It would be my recommendation to not change code. What I think might be beneficial to keep, you know, the 130 contacts that Denise gets every year, we could do some advertising, update the pamphlet, those kind of things, just to get the word out. Literally, the violations that we talked about, 170 plus, I think it was, nobody was aware that they were violating any law. So I think we start there. That's a known problem.
Yeah, no, I think this is great. And thank you, Councilmember Campbell, for bringing this up. This conversation happened, geez, maybe 10 or 11 years ago. And if you remember back in those days, we also were clearing out our fire hydrant lines at the time. And so everybody was discharging onto the road, but at all hours of the day. And you kind of ping pong your way through the roads if you don't want to try and get wet. And you don't really have to do that anymore. So the current code as written works out well. But even for me to contact wastewater, I knew you were supposed to and how the sewer worked, but I'm not one of the ones that have a pool, so it doesn't really impact me. But I wouldn't have been able to verbalize that to somebody. So I think this is a great education. But the way this code is written, I think it. education. But the way this code is written, I think it achieves our areas. And I do agree with you, Mr. Frosley, to update what we have on the website so our citizens have access to the current information. And, you know, when it comes to draining to the streets in Havasu, it's just different. It's part, our streets are part of our wastewater system, and they were built. And the reason they're so big is to take on storm water primarily. And so we want to really mitigate the nuisance to our citizens, which I think is done by the time constraints in here. And I don't, driving the streets during the day, I don't see too many violations myself. Of course, I have a really small drive pattern, but I don't see that many. And I don't get any complaints really from citizens about it. So I'm comfortable with the code as written and increase the education we have on the website, if that is the will of the council. We can give that direction to staff and be able to use that as an informative opportunity for our citizens that this impacts. So.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Doyle?
Okay. Just wanted to weigh in here. Yeah, like I said, I'm definitely comfortable with the code the way it is now. I do have a question for Mr. Frosley. So those that drain into the areas that have the pumps, I guess my question is, those that don't drain to the areas that have the pumps, are they okay? I mean, can we put a map online where people could see which area they were in and check and call ahead of time? So those that, I mean, so I guess my question is, if you're not in one of those areas with the pump, are we worried about it overwhelming the system, or is everybody okay to drain at that point? Or do we only have them contact us just because we're worried about those areas where we have the pumps?
That's a great question. The pumps, citywide, we have seven small pump stations. There's probably less than 200 houses total on those. So, and yes, it is important that they contact us so we can tell them to not do that. And other than that area, we have ample capacity to handle these. Now, if this becomes popular or one day it becomes mandated, if we've got, it's going to have to be administered by the city, you know, if 30 people in the city decide to drain their pool, that's 500,000 gallons. And so that would be more than a blip on the radar for us at the treatment plant. We can handle it, but we want to know it's coming.
Okay. That's good to know. And like I said, I mean, I feel comfortable with the way it is. You know, we're talking about, you know, consumption is one thing. Water conservation is another topic. But as far as, you know, like the Councilmember Lane said, if it's not damaging the roads to a point where it's an issue, or, you know, we don't need the effluent water, and I think we're right on where we need to be at the moment. I mean, if we're really concerned about roads, and of course, this is another topic, my biggest concern is all the utility companies chopping up the roads and not putting them back the way they should be. But that's definitely another topic for the future. So.
Thank you, Councilmember Doyle. I thought that was a great idea, too, about the maps on that. So I guess my request would be, as people are pulling permits on a regular basis, that they learn the laws, and then maybe we won't have as many code violations or people out doing it wrong. That's all. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Excellent. All right. Is there any further discussion from council? Seeing that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane and a second from Vice Mayor Coke. We are adjourned. Thanks for joining us.